It is six oh two. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Danville Board Director. Tuesday, February fourth at six o'clock. We're all in the room, so there's no need to say anything out loud. So, that's right.
Sure. The recording, we just do it for the recording, for the minutes.
But we take the minutes in this room.
That's true.
Any attendance down?
Nobody on there?
No, no one's on here.
Nobody on. So I guess maybe we should all say our names. Tim joins here, there'll be a Zoom. Reese's Adam. So Clayton Cardy on the chair of the board, we're this way.
Eric Hewitt, board member.
Molly Gleason.
Molly Gleason Clark.
Not her last meeting, you should know yet. I haven't got to that far yet.
But wait, there's more.
I was gonna head back to the agenda, but okay. I guess not.
You're close. This way.
Matt Foster Superintendent.
Natalie Conway Secondary Principal. Sarah Welch Elementary Principal.
And tonight we have a guest who's going to be promoted.
First and last.
Say your whole name. You're a half a hit for the student representative position. What? You got to.
What's your first name? Anna McCandice. Nice job.
Thank you, Keira.
Keira, I'm gonna ask you again. Let's try to get right. K E or K E A R A H H. And then Mac and then Google.
I gotcha.
The third time I've written it.
I know. She helped me spell the first time. I love it. I'm like, oh, that's right, Mac Google. I remember. I got Dave. Yep. Dave, I'm trying to promote you. Just letting you know. We're good. Okay.
Hi, Dave. We've only just introduced ourselves. If you would introduce yourself as well.
Thank you. Dave Toll, Vice Chair, on Zoom.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I had sent you guys an email about a possible addition or change to the agenda. So what that means is one more meeting coming down. By the future, I couldn't get that done in time. So we'll move past that one. Does anybody else have any additions or changes to this? We're gonna formal action add to the agenda.
Would that lengthen the meeting time? That's right. I would like.
And the open court position as a secondary part of that, the open court position. There's a couple of things that she may have to describe that she's done during the course of her work that are going to be very relevant.
True.
So add that to the agenda underneath some of our attendance stuff. Anything else? Okay, so moving on to the approval of minutes.
A motion to add that?
Oh, yeah, we do. Sorry. So Eric made the motion.
Oh, second.
Your second.
Actually, I want you to second because I think it looks weird. That's pretty cool. I just think that's awesome. I want somebody to read that and go, that's strange. I want, that'd be the most interesting thing in the meeting notes, I bet.
All in favor of adding that to the agenda, please say aye. I appreciate the addition. Nothing else? Add it? Okay, so we'll move down to the two sets of minutes, January seventh, twenty twenty five, and January twentieth, twenty twenty five. January, in the January seventh meeting, we finalized, or we thought we finalized the budget. We talked through a couple of other things related to. And then January twentieth minutes, we had to get back together and discuss. An additional change and then also a proof of worth. There you go. We're in the middle of approving minutes, Tim. Go ahead and say hello for the record.
Hi.
Hi. What the notes show, Tim said hi.
Okay, so. Does everybody have a chance to look at the minutes they wanted to and take a look at them? Molly wrote on my review. They're good. I can take one fell swoop motion to approve January seventh, January twenty, twenty twenty five minutes. So moving. Motion. I have a motion to approve the minutes. I have a second to approve those minutes, January seventh, twenty twenty five, January twenty, twenty twenty five. Any questions? All in favor of that approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Now we're gonna move down to the superintendent's report. Noteworthy in the superintendent's report is at least one somewhat detailed explanation of sort of the actions around the governor's proposal. If you'd like to discuss the governor's proposal, the person to speak to about it is probably Matt, better than, better than me, but I think he and I have some similar opinions on what it is right now. And just go ahead and leave it at that. Let him know what you think.
In, yeah. I'd be happy to, I did try to give a little synopsis of where we were at as of last Friday. I think that their updates kind of bleeding out through different organizations constantly and people are kind of asking each other what's going on, what's the latest? And it's almost like gossip soup right now. So I really don't think there's anything that we can control, but we can definitely share our opinions and our thoughts with our legislators and with different organizations that are trying to speak on behalf of public education in Vermont. And as we get closer to May, I think that's when we'd have a much clearer idea how things are going to shake out. I have been told by the legislators that they believe that this session will be a little bit longer than normal, just because there are so many items that they would need to, there's to address, and it's so intricate. And I tried to put into my brief synopsis here that the plan is ambitious and I just don't think that the A O E has yet their hands around how many different spinning plates that are out there. They haven't even identified them to know what they needed focus on or work on, and that has something with just the lack of capacity that the A O E has right now to be able to manage what they are currently cast with doing, let alone do something as ambitious as this. So I think there's a lot that's going to happen in that over a period of time here, and we just don't know what it's going to be. And I think it'll be an interesting time this spring for everybody involved.
Any questions on that? There was an article, we had a, we had a speaker in January, John Castle from BREC on the commission. The future of public education voted against putting this proposal forward. He sent in a thing to Digger, which I forwarded to some CCSU, to the CCSU board, because he had just come to speak to us, it was more relevant there. About the wolf and sheep clothing that it may be, but again, it's all speculation. And if the legislature says no, this all just ends and nothing changes. So we don't know what's going to happen and it's going to be hard to avoid the conversations, but Kevin can give people the correct answers.
Well said. I get people asking questions every day, teachers, things of that nature.
It's just very, very difficult to understand. You know, where it goes, the one part of the proposal that is troubling is if they change the values on student places. Which is regarding to rurality and poverty, which in the proposals, I have that whispered in my ear, are going to change the morality. Like, how much further do we go down and how much are they forcing small towns to get less money again? But again, we're speculative.
Right. It is what it is. It's all speculation.
Anything else you want to tell us? That's a lot of bad news.
I think that we're getting interesting information from the federal level and the state level right now. It's an interesting time to be in public education in the state of Vermont.
At the local level, did we have any great ones dried up or vanished?
Nope. Nope.
So move on. Student Services Report. Guys got it. It was in the packet. I think it came Saturday morning, but it was in the packet. Any questions on Student Services Report? Hey, Brad, all right?
Yep, Friday. Well, the report probably in March from Curriculum Department.
Let's move down to the Principals Report. There was one thing, it's in the report that may be pending. Do you have that ready?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I'll give you the floor and that one thing's in the meeting, I hope. And we might steal it for the Saturday meeting.
I think we will. We'll just check the numbers.
Yep. Do you want to start with that?
Start with whatever you want. I'm gonna give you the floor.
I can start. So we have.
I need you to share the screen so Dave can see. If you're ready to share.
It's not. It's not embedded.
Yeah.
Couple of months ago, we had a parent and grandparent approach Natalie and I. They are professional grant writers and offered their services to us to find research apply for grants. And so we've had a couple of meetings with them to talk about what's available. Most recently, last week, we talked about them, which, you know, was very timely with all of this stuff. At that time still, there was a freeze on all of the federal, on all of the federal grants. But what they're looking at, a lot of what they're looking at is different foundations and things like that to support. We've kind of garnered a wish list for ourselves. We've reached out to the staff. They've garnered a wish list for some things. One of the grants, though, that we're actively working on pursuing is called the COPS Grant. It is a federal grant. It wasn't on the list of frozen federal ones. The presumption is because it originated when Trump was in office. So hopefully this day that one comes out in March. It is specifically around school safety. And while we have a lot of things that we've done, there's still some projects that we've talked about as a school. So looking at like locks, looking at any camera system updates or any sort of thing like that. This one requires a twenty-five percent match. So we talked to Matt when we, when that initially got shared with us, knowing, you know, that we've talked about some of our projects. There's a willingness to do our projects, but I think that willingness would be a lot.
Easier to do.
Yeah, it's easier to swallow if it's twenty-five percent of that, of that total, than, than the whole thing. What we're not a hundred percent sure, I wasn't clear because I don't think their answer was clear on whether we have to put the whole bill upfront. They said two different things.
They said no at first, like, would we have to front that twenty-five percent or would that just be?
Or the hundred percent even, or whether it's. So I, that part I didn't.
We'll have to get more information about that, but it's the COPS Grant, C O P S.
What does that, you know, that stands for? Yeah. It's all around security and school security and stuff. So that's, that's a grant that we're working on.
Community, community oriented policing services out of the U.S. Department of Justice.
And so we worked with our Ellie Keith, who's our district grants manager. She's been involved in those conversations as well, so we're gonna apply for it and see where it goes. And then as we have numbers and actual things to bring to you guys to approve and say, yep, we'll do that obviously, but.
Is it a parent and grandparent or two people?
Two people, yes. They're related.
And from Danville, in Danville.
Yeah. The parents, yeah.
Their kids are in elementary school.
Yeah, so it's a great opportunity and hoping that it generates some funding for some different projects and things.
Yeah. Some small things, big things. It's really, yeah. Our teachers don't ask for a lot.
With an SU focus, if you, if our Assistant Finance Director, Ellie, goes out and finds out about it, and some of these things may be over elsewhere in the S U, which even if the S U just has it.
Like widening that, that reach.
There's a chance to take a larger S U.
Especially things like the community schools grant, I think some of the schools already. Yeah, they just have a whole list for us, which is. Yeah. Yeah. And then the other thing was, I live in St. Johnsbury and they had sent out to all of the families and like this morgue, like that Sarah and I send every few weeks. And one of their smores was a kind of a budget infographic and.
Let's clarify smores as a newsletter.
Sorry, yes, smores is a newsletter. Yeah.
Sure.
Smores the newsletter template, digital newsletter that we use. I know. It's a really, there's a new picture of our students' grants on the front there. From a few years ago. And so they had like the, you know, the parts that have just the numbers and the words and eight point font, single space. But then they had some nice graphs and charts that really allowed you to see at a glance, what's the senior school budget, where's the money going? What's increasing expenditures? And it's all very similar story to Danville's. And so we asked Cassie and Cassie Vogel in the front office, our amazing admin assistant. She is talented in graphic design. And so we gave her, I gave her what St. Jay had sent, and she developed this for us. So this is draft one. Sarah and I haven't looked at this to make sure the numbers are all accurate yet, but we just really would like to make sure that the information is highly accessible and to make it as accessible as it can, to make it highly visual. So what Mike has initially sent us is all fantastic information and how do we make that information really readable to the average person and to the busy parent who isn't going to sit and read it? Yeah, so the fiscal year twenty-six budget at a glance, obviously that's not accurate. We need to get those numbers and labels. But just to be able to show people very visually where the money is, is going. And, yeah, so Cassie created this for us in about twenty-four hours. Good, great job. But this is something that we would like to use, then we'd be happy to message it out to our Danville families or even have a printed copy in the front office.
And be able to create, like, they have a frequently asked questions very specifically, and I think that was, that was a nice key thing Jay does, to be able to use some similar components and have answered questions in a, just in a different way and really trying to like, talk about, like, that our informational meeting a very small population at the time actually goes to, trying to reach a larger population.
With easily accessible information.
Really visually friendly way. And so we would take these, put this information into a newsletter. And then we could just link that in subsequent newsletters as well. So that's what they've continued to do. And so they've even linked like voter information at the top, like this is where you register, you know, all of that. It's very all encompassing, I guess. So I just thought of a smart marketing.
I think I talked to Mark about, an operation to do at one point was like a impact report. So it's not just the financials of the budget, but really telling the story about what is going on with students in the school and where the money is going. And that can get really in depth, but if there, I think for most people, unfortunately, they're probably going to open this and just blaze over and be like, I still don't know what I'm doing. You know, I think it's nice to kind of, because.
It would not be laid out in this format. In a newsletter. This is more just like the visuals.
This is just how I could print it right now. Yeah, I think, you know, kind of making it relevant for them in a way of like, I think people don't know what happens in the school and connecting the data to the funding and in a storytelling way, I think is really useful. But just something food for thought, not to like, it's a huge, it could be a huge project to take on. But I'd seen one that we did, we did, I don't know if you were on the board at the time, but that was one a long time ago that I found, but this is great. Like, I'll see if I can find it. I think I sent it to Mark and I had offered to do something similar. But, yeah, I think any information we can get out there is helpful. Yeah. So it's great.
Yeah, I like the initiative and also just the direction that we put it to our own families, to the constituency that is our students, the parents or our student population. Because last year we got five hundred adults in the theater or in the room, and the people that were in the room were mostly diaries. We weren't, we weren't always getting the voters that we need to help us, to help us.
Yeah.
We had that struggle at Wolkett where, when we had a hard time passing like three budgets, it had the parents just showed up, it would have passed. It was just hard to get them in.
So I mean, the simplest one, this one, is better than visually what Mike, what Mike gives us, even let's see exact information.
Correct.
The big circle, I think the big circle.
I really like that one.
The big circle.
Well, I mean, honestly, as a taxpayer in St. Jay, that's what I, I can send you guys the links too, so you can see the smores that I received as a parent. But, you know, when I was scrolling through, it was, it was this graphic that, you know, has like eighteen pieces to it, but I could see it. I'm like, oh, wow, a lot of our money goes to this. And, oh, it seems like not a lot is going to that. And so. I just felt, yeah, I just felt like, you know, I got a lot of information very quickly. Yeah. So.
Sometimes as board members, we focus on, this is a number we can't change, this is a number we can't change. There's no, people don't hear that.
Right.
How much are you spending on staff, right? And so there's, there's any different way to present this, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd love to have it, I'd love to have it by side of it.
I think we can do that. If you guys wanted me to look it over and you. Tomorrow's not going to be a good day for it, but Friday I got a chance.
Even just as a draft, the numbers I have are embedded on the proposal I have. So I just, I had some contracts to show.
Right.
It's the same information presented.
Totally the same.
That's awesome. Thank you for this. Thank you. What are you working on, like I said last week, if you're willing to do it?
Make sure to thank Cassie too.
Yeah, Cassie did a ton. The St. Joe's School was really agreeable. I emailed them and I was like, what template did you use? How did you do? They have a graphic designer that did their stuff. We'll try. And then Cassie let me know that she has a skill set that I didn't know about, so that's pretty cool. Yeah.
So that was two things. Was there a third thing?
No, just two.
Grants, just two. Grants and this. Money, money.
Money, money.
Any further questions on the Principal's Report? Remind me to ask you after the meeting.
Did you say welfare question? That's much different. Thanks.
All right, if not, we'll move on. Moving down to board business, we had an applicant for the student representative to the school. I'll bring you to the floor to Natalie to discuss how we got here.
Sure. So in the past, we've had a student representative to the school board and that role was to be the liaison between the Danville School's student body and Danville School Board. Two years ago, we had a student. Yeah, two years ago, Thomas Edgar was that representative. Last year, we were unable to get somebody to be able to commit to that. And this year, I put it out to the student body again and Kiara came and was super excited and very willing to participate. So Clayton and I have, I recommended her, Clayton and I interviewed her.
We haven't recommended her yet. We interviewed her. You're recommending her tonight.
Okay, cool. For that, yes.
The first thing we did with Kiara was we sent her a copy of the student representative policy and then also a copy of Thomas's project that was about the student rep and how the pieces that he was trying to put together to build the project.
Yeah, we basically have a whole.
What we're trying to build upon, but what we're trying to build back to start with.
Yeah.
And we talked, we talked in a meeting about what our expectations are and how the groundwork can be laid, but it's going to be a tough goal and to get back started and what kind of help that you're looking for and what some of your initial assignments might be. And we'll talk about your initial assignments would probably be to interview some board members to get an idea of what they're expecting. And then what else can we talk about, do you remember?
Just how you'll, how you'll communicate with students, you know, like how to get information.
How to get information.
Data.
And then maybe also to come with us to town meeting to watch how the town interacts with the school board. So on a town meeting day, maybe be physically present in the, in the, in the meeting, sitting either, you know, across and watching or with, depending on how you, how you're more comfortable to see how the, how the board interacts with the town and how the town interacts with the local government in general. And so as some of the initial assignments before we get really started on her necessarily having to make reports out of nothing, that's how we thought we'd start. If she was, if she was added on to the board, she read through the policy, you talked to this teach?
No.
No?
I think. It'll probably be senior project material, but that's next year oriented, so. And can the party have an idea of this?
That's fine. That's fine. That's fine. So I think she, I think she was going to liaise first because she wants that information, so it may be useful to get in touch with her because she's going to want the completed work because she, that's the thing that she's also working on in her mind.
Right. For coming years.
So she, she would give the credit. And so that's why you want to touch the place where there's a potential for credit. She gets the credit. But for tonight, we've had a willing person that we've interviewed. Do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I bring to you Kiara McGoel, highly recommended as our student representative to the school.
And in the short term, the policy requires mentorship and I would offer to mentor her in the short term. And then it came in with, came out in the interviews that she preferred somebody else. She might ask a switch. I give her that opportunity that she doesn't have to be stuck in.
I think I'm okay.
Okay, so I have a nomination here for a student representative to the school board of Kiara McGoel. To name that person I'm going to. I have a motion to name Kiara McGoel, student representative of the school board. Under Policy C forty, I have a second as well. All right, a motion in the second. Any further questions? All in favor of that action, please say aye.
Aye.
Pretty cool.
Because Dave Toll's stuck up on.
All right, so that motion carries and Kiara, you're now the student representative of the school board. Thank you very much for your willingness and Sarah goes, I think it's fine, and we'll be in touch.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you for your willingness.
This will be a restating building foundation year.
Yeah. We're building, we're building from a place far back. All right, moving on. The March meeting of any month meeting of the school board is on the second, so the first Monday, the first Tuesday of any month. And town meeting is on the first Tuesday of March, so we have to move our meeting. And traditionally, since I've been involved in the board, we just jumped to the Thursday. So the Thursday would be second, it would be March.
Six.
Okay, is there a day that you'd like to be available?
I'm not available.
We have to wait at least like two days to get some paperwork from all town meetings.
It goes right, it goes right, you sign it right at this.
So does the fifth.
Can you do? So often the, the fifth is a superintendent. This, so February the fifth.
Is it J fifth, March? Looking. What, yeah. Oh, yeah. March the fifth.
So if we do March the fifth, six o'clock for a special meeting?
Sold.
We'll have a full year of the station meeting. And.
You said six, correct?
Six P M.
Okay.
All right, so we'll put that one on the schedule and that is now scheduled six P M for the real organization meeting of the school. And. Moving down then. The select board selected Saturday, twelve, twelve to one or twelve thirty to one for lunch. And then one o'clock in the town hall, there is a meeting, an informational meeting. If you can attend, that would be great. If you can't, that's okay too. It's a Saturday, it's sort of out of the blue. We've never done one this early. It is not a meeting where we're conducting any business. It's an informational meeting only. We are the guests of the select board. We'll put up a, a statement, it's just for legality sake, we have an agenda for legality sake. We'll take no action, we know action. We'll accept public input only in the form of questions. So if you can be there at one o'clock or twelve o'clock for lunch.
I think twelve thirty is lunch and one o'clock's meeting. I think that's what I had on mine.
This side.
Oh. And it said one thirty is the meeting?
One o'clock's meeting.
Yeah, we're going at one o'clock because we're going, we're officially going first. And we hope any lunch will be working. This is the select board type.
It's going to lure somebody.
The specific, the select board says if they serve lunch, then they'll get a wider audience of people. And but also the reason we're going early is a wider audience of people with questions, but.
Are they Danville voters?
Details, details.
Don't put a sign out.
But I think the idea, the idea also of going early is to get the information out and let questions come in so that you can deal with some of the questions or as opposed to people being surprised by the action. Or as opposed to people being surprised by the action during the vacation.
What are you hoping for Natalie and I typically?
So my expectations for you are based on your availability, more than anything else. Yeah, so if, if you're available to, to, to sit, it's always great to have your perspective. But if you're unavailable for this meeting, sort of came out of the blue, I understand that, if it comes on a daily, your vacation, I don't expect you to forego your vacation.
And the other one is the night before.
The other one's the night before. And, um, that's in North Danville.
This is at the town hall.
Correct.
Yes, that's the, like, semifinal.
And so there'll be a presentation based on the, um, the info sheet that we talked about in the last meeting. And we'll talk through what we know of the budget, you know, the, how the budget got shaped with the people with the town who were there to answer questions.
Historically, North Danvilles, but, but are attended.
This one's actually not, this one, I, I've, I've been at this one when there's thirty-five people.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
No way, that's not possible.
Okay, that must have been a big year.
That's cool.
I mean, we've done, you've had some big years.
I went last year.
This one where there's been four people.
There were more than that.
And so, that's why I was asking about the food, because I was like, but it's also like a different time of day than people are used to. It'll be interesting to see how that change helps or doesn't, yeah.
And the hope is just, just to make an attempt to try anything to get more people to ask questions here, yeah. And it wasn't on, but we are agreeing.
We are agree up.
Okay, so that's that, the other one we'll talk about, the other one is, I guess. About that, so that's, that's the informational meeting attendance, since we're talking about meetings, I'll go ahead and tell you now. Uh, we are unable to, to tonight, talk about the support staff. One track, the support staff contract, what purpose this is, it has been completely agreed to. It's been tentatively officially agreed to by the, by both sides of the committee, and the first action that comes after that one, so where it goes back to us. Is that the union has to take it to every single bargaining unit, and then have them vote. And so they have to go to the Barnet School, the Waterford School, and the, um, Walden School. And then those people have to vote, they have to tally those votes and make sure that it passes muster there for CCSB. And the Danville School, the support staff has to vote, and they have to bring all those votes back to us, and then they have to also tally up a separate set of votes. For CCSU employees, but there is a, a separate bargaining unit, you know, that we're gonna do. So they have to have an idea that, that, that all of their members are.
I think Cap is involved too, yeah.
Fit to that, and so we're waiting for that process to happen, and once that process happens, we'll be able to whiz bang through hopefully. A few meetings, at which point I'm happy to explain what happened and what's available. And I can say, we can actually send you the, the tentative agreement now, if it's, it's official, uh, if you wanted to review it.
Danville's vote should have happened.
Yeah, so, we should, we should be closing it, right, so what you're gonna do is you're gonna hear from me, and I'm gonna need some quick availability. Um, I don't know yet a day, um, I know the CCSU board has a meeting.
Next.
Two Mondays from there, but that may be too late. That's the seventeen, so sometime between now and the seventeen for sure. And I need a core of members, um, and I will have one notable extension.
Right.
And, you know, only the former members who can extend, and so this can be, this can be in person, this can be via Zoom, and this can be by telephone. Because I just need you to hear what I have to say, and then vote throughout my daily. That was your last meeting.
That will be my last meeting? Oh, good.
So that's that, so informational data attendance, expecting you one more time.
Here we are, the one.
Alright, so moving down to, uh, the open court position that's coming up in the farewell for Molly. Um, three years ago, probably three years and two months ago, I stood outside the school in the back. When we used to, she used to walk by, so I, I just begged her, I begged her to please come and join the board, I need help, I need, um. Somebody who I can trust, who will ask questions, and who I know will think, and who I make pairs, and she thought about it, said no. Thought about it again, the next day when I asked her again, I said no, the third day she said yes, then she called me and said no. And it just, like, I just, I, I.
You didn't take notes on that?
Because I needed her help, and, um, I have needed her help, I've appreciated her help, I've, um, spent many hours talking to her about it. It's very, very difficult, I, I've, I've been very, very grateful. You know, and, um. I don't know what we're gonna do, I don't know what we're gonna do about minutes, but it's, it's, it really, it always felt like it diminished you to be the minutes person in these meetings. But I've been glad that you, but I've been glad that you've been doing them, because they're so important, because the, the, and I don't know what we're gonna do about minutes going forward, but, um. If we're gonna go to the, yeah, so the other, the other districts in the agenda, they have much simpler minutes, and the video stands on its own. But I think people look at the minutes, I don't think they look at the minutes when they're happy, I think they look at them when they're mad, and I think that when they're good, they're good. And they're helpful, and then you can go check contacts or whatever, but it's not about the minutes, this is just about your, your contributions and your questions. And your tirelessness when you were angry with the way things were going, and the pressure with the things were going, and, um. All the questions you had remarked that made him, uh, you know. They were all very helpful, um.
And, and work on the, um, on the building committee too, that was.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Fantastic contribution, so.
No, thank you, I appreciate that, and speaking of that building committee, there is the lingering website that I manage through my. Google Workspace account through CCSU, so I don't know if we just wanna get rid of it, or, like, does it go away as of March?
It just.
Town meeting day, when, you know, obviously my account goes away, so I'm assuming that I could transfer it to somebody, or Tim, take over. I mean, it's fine if it just goes away, I don't have, it doesn't have to remain, but, um, I have a feeling that it, I don't know.
I don't, I do not think it should go away.
I think we can archive it at least.
Okay. Transfer ownership, yeah. I think I'm the only owner on it, I don't think anybody else is the owner of it, so.
Oh, so that would be good.
That's why I just think.
I need to put him on there, I'll check, I'll look into that.
But all that stuff doesn't go away typically, so that's good, like.
Even if I own it and I.
Yeah, so even, even like drive items, and like all of that, yeah, because I just asked him about that with another person. I was like, oh, can you transfer all that, and he was like, don't worry about it, just, it just stays there, like. Yeah, right, but there's no, okay, yeah, there's no reason to like delete it all.
Okay, that's fine, and that's.
Your legacy lives on, Google.
And so absent the minutes, absent the attendance, absent the work, there was one other, um, there was one other time when you had to do some really official duties as a clerk. So there are some things that a clerk does.
Yeah.
Schedule some.
Yes, it's very random.
Some meetings in a trial.
Yes, there's like one.
There are, there are, there are some other duties of a clerk that come, that came out of nowhere that we didn't know existed.
Yeah.
We're trying.
Like I had to let people know about things that had to come from the clerk, for instance, like I had to let you all know about, right, it was an incident, a hearing, yeah.
But.
So it's not a huge thing, but.
Maybe, maybe something that ever comes up, but it came up out of nowhere.
Yeah.
And so, we will be looking for somebody on this one to do that job.
Think about another one.
Um, regarding people on this board do that job, I've not had a lot of action off of those pleas. I have, I have people that are willing to be named, a one person willing to be named to nominally. A former board member that says he would probably still be at the basketball games, but he could be nominally on the board. Yeah, he might not be able to attend all of the meetings because he's busy with basketball games. So if, if there are people, if you have people out there whose ears you have, tell them how easy it is, and how like one meeting a month, and it lasts like twenty minutes. There's no pressure.
That's right.
And, um, let's, let's get them hooked, let's get them hooked.
Get them mad at me?
And that's all. So, and just to be clear, Molly, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
That's the, that's the major to this, is seriously, thanks.
Yep.
I think you all too, it's been an experience.
Your bucket list has been filled.
Yeah.
It's meaningful, it is meaningful.
It is meaningful.
There's Molly, she got out.
The minutes will note.
Yes.
Molly got out.
I can leave out what I say.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah, have you?
Yeah.
You can put what you want on there, okay, and moving down from there, this is basically over, so public input, the public. You know, the public.
Anybody else? Is there a public?
Nobody, nobody, I still like that. Uh, future agenda items, uh, will be, we're going to be completely restructuring, the reorganization of the board. And, um, we hope nothing else, on our next meeting date, which is Wednesday.
We'll grab the support staff.
Support staff thing before that it comes up, um, I think, I think that's twenty, I don't know what's gonna happen.
Don't know either, but great if we could do like a carousel meeting, you're not gonna allow, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, I think, I think we could probably.
Update on the cops, is it, it's cops? Yeah, I believe so.
That may be, that may be an ongoing thing, though.
I think it'll probably be an ongoing, yeah, probably just in our, uh, updates.
Yeah, there's a lot of information gathering we have to do for it, and, yeah.
Alright, and then at six forty-two, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn, I have a second to adjourn, all the day of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Getting adjourned, six forty-two.
Good job.